Okay, so I'll call the meeting back to order. And now we're in the town office meeting room. And it is now 6:35. So first on the agenda with the public comment. Who wants to go first?
Steve?
Oh, I just said, who wants to go first?
So this is, oh.
The public comment.
The public comment.
Okay, I guess I'm here because I sent you guys a letter about possible, the potential ATV ordinance that you're talking about. And I just want to make sure that you got it. And have you read it?
I, I had it.
And so I think that says everything that, I think, I feel very strongly that you should not allow ATVs on any roads in Moretown. I won't go into a lot of detail, but it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's totally incompatible with our town plan. And it's not compatible with motor vehicle safety. So I think my letter that I sent says it all. So I'd like that to be in your records.
Sasha, do you have copies of those letters? Where are they in our packet here?
No, I did not bring them out.
Okay. And, you know, I'd like to talk more about it. Like, you know, if you have it down as old business.
Right, I mean, that's fine.
I mean, I would like to discuss it more at a little business time.
Or if you want to.
You know, if that's.
That's fine.
And I think, you know, when people alter the same thing.
Yeah, no, I'd like to discuss it.
Yeah, we definitely want to discuss that more.
Yep.
We couldn't do it now to make it so they, you know, do that old business item now.
Yeah, and it's old business pending, so I mean, and if.
It's entirely up to you if we want to talk about it now.
If Joe Gabory is not coming, then we have, we have some extra time.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine.
Well, I mean, wouldn't be other people coming because it's later in the agenda? And then what?
No, but the, for the ATV ordinance, that's just under old business pending. But it's, it's not on the actual agenda. See, what happens to you with old business is we, we go down to the, what's, what's basically meeting after meeting after meeting. It's the same old business that's there. Just to see if there's any updates on it. And I know that both Callie and Ray were doing some other work on the ordinance since our last meeting. So, so let's just, let's just talk about it now since you're all, everybody's here.
Yeah.
So actually, do we want to hear maybe that that's really from like, what are you folks thinking? I'm kind of in shock, actually, that it's.
I think you should hear it.
Yeah, because I went to this select ordinance and I was like, oh, it doesn't, you know, it's not safe. So I, part of the reason I'm here is to find out what you guys are thinking.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, go ahead or.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think the majority of the reason is up until this spring, the state had it, as I understand, that ATVs could be on class four roads. And that's how it was. It was a state rule. The town had, in essence, allowed that. And the state has since changed where they are, how they are doing that. So it became, basically, the town putting in an ordinance for them to do that.
So anybody else want to add anything to that?
Yeah.
That interpretation of law is, is not everybody agrees with that interpretation of law. There has been legal. And we feel like an ordinance would, well, when you, when you set up the ordinance, you're going to have to post on the road that ATVs can come here. And that's going to cause more traffic. I also would allow it. Is that in the package?
Yep.
So that the increased traffic on the road would have an adverse impact on lots of things.
I think we need to really stress here, though, I think you're misinterpreting state law. And the reason the state, and I think I say it in my letter, it was badly, it was a badly edited state law. A lot of organizations disagree with that interpret, the interpretation of VASA that you could be on class four because they're not plowed. The intent of the law, really from the beginning, was to keep ATVs out of regular traffic. So to say you can ride on a class four unplowed road any time of year doesn't keep them out of traffic. They're not safe on public roads. They're not meant to be. They weren't designed and manufactured to be on public roads with regular traffic. So you can't say that you could drive on those class four roads during the summertime with all the other traffic that's on the road and say that that was legal in the past. It never was. So there's no reason to go, actually, make it legal now by the town.
So right now, any vehicle, as long as it is registered and inspected, can go from Lynch Hill to Herringbrook. Any vehicle, as long as you have a registration, you've got a plate, and you have a sticker, any vehicle can do that on a class four road, as long as you're registered and inspected.
Not ATVs.
So if we're talking about safety, knowing how wide that road is and all the blind corners on that road, I would honestly be more concerned about getting, meeting up with a truck with 37-inch tires and a seven, eight-inch lift in it than I would potentially an ATV.
So I think that would be an ordinance then for Gates.
An ordinance for people with trucks off the road.
Exactly, and that's a majority of the problem up there is the trucks destroying private property.
I think that's another whole issue. So and I think the thing with the ATVs right now, they aren't legal. They've never been legal in, in traffic. They're really meant to be on public property. And I cited in the letter, the ATV Manufacturers Association says they should never be on public roads. They're meant for private property.
They're not supposed to be.
They're designed and manufactured for, um, out of regular traffic. They don't meet federal motor vehicle standards. So I think the whole issue with all of the other problems that are out there is kind of different. And what we really don't want is, like I said before, there was an ordinance in the past to open the roads to ATVs. And it was a nightmare. Callie, you weren't living there, so you missed it. But it.
I was a member of the, we never did sign the ordinance.
It was like a temporary.
We talked about an ordinance. We never passed an ordinance.
So but everybody, so you didn't even have to pass it. And everybody believed that Moretown opened those roads. And it created a huge amount of traffic. It put us on the map.
It, but that was, but the, the map came out prematurely. It was not something that was authorized or by the side. But let me, can I just state where I'm coming from on this? Okay? Because where I live, I see, I see all the ATVs. I see as many as you, I'm sure. And my problem is, I see unregistered, uninsured, unhelmed people going by my house all the time. And my feeling is, the only way we're going to get any type of control on this is to pass an ordinance and with some bike to it that will, that can enforce it and, and keep myself and people that want to legally ride these roads out there. You know, because I feel as a, as a citizen, as a taxpayer in Moretown, these, these classical roads, these trails are part mine, like yours. And if I want to ride an ATV on them respectively, I should be able to do that. And there, there are a lot of people, residents in our neighborhood, our group, that, that drive like I do respectively. And I don't think we need to break the law to do that. And I'm trying to work out some sort of solution to that end.
How is an ordinance and putting this on paper going to protect us any more than all of the state law that's already on view? There's all the unregistered vehicles that are coming out, the speeding, the running people off the road practically. That's all illegalism is now. We don't need an ordinance to get control of that. What we need is law enforcement.
Which we don't, and you.
You're not going to have one. Where is the law enforcement going to come from?
Well, that's it. If, if we can, and this is an early stage of this, if we can get a license fee or some fees from the people that want to use these roads to offset the cost of the, you know, the regulation. Yeah.
You're going to charge people to come out and make it, basically, it sounds like you want to have an ATV park out in the preserve area.
No, wait, can I, can I just speak?
It's Fountain, it's a timber company.
Wait, can I just say one thing? I, I think one thing that we shouldn't lose in this is that, and maybe the word ATV ordinance was the wrong word at this early stage. I think what Ray and Callie, when they started, we started talking about it, the coming out of COVID and into the summer, is they've been trying to just work on and do some brainstorming on how to, how to deal with this issue or this item. So no, it's not, there's nothing in stone.
There's nothing in stone, but I think you need to have more people.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think this is the beginning of, you know, yeah, some community engagement to talk about, you know, how this can be dealt with.
Or not worked on.
I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not personally an ATV user, so I, you know, I don't know anything about it, but I know that we do have an issue. So it's good to try to work on it.
I'd like to try to summarize a little what Deb is saying, though. And Ray, your comment was, we didn't even make an ordinance and they put it on the map prematurely. What Deb is saying is, if you're making some sort of ordinance, you're putting it on the map and you're going to attract people. So unless you have, and you want to make an ordinance with bikes, that's great, but I don't know where the bikes are going to come because the town has no teeth. Okay? And we've been dealing with this for as long as I've lived there.
Over 10 years. And it was never going, we call, we've got state police coming to meetings and saying, we're not coming out there, we're not going to enforce it. The town won't provide any money for enforcement. I call up the state police and I say, there's like three or four dirt bikes out here racing up and down the street, it's dangerous, can you come out? And I think, before the next kid gets killed, because we've already had a kid get killed. What do they say?
That was a completely different situation. Because Malik was killed.
We were there.
On the corner, on a blind corner.
I don't care, we were there, we know what they were doing.
My best friend died up there.
That, I, okay.
On the opposite side of the road. There has not been an ATV fatality on that road. And I know there hasn't because I called the state police today and I had them check. And they stated that there was no fatalities up there.
I never said it was an ATV, my town ordinance brought out. It's brought, what's brought people out there to be racing on the road, whether it's an ATV, a dirt bike, mud truck, anything else, is that there's no law enforcement. And the, we had a meeting, I think it was about eight, 10 years ago, we had a meeting about all that was going on. And the state trooper, the lieutenant from the barracks, head of the barracks, stands up in the meeting and tells everybody publicly, we are not coming out there, we're not going to enforce anything. So that's another issue. So it isn't that there's deaths by ATVs. It's the kind of behavior that's out there that there's no law enforcement. And we haven't seen it. And there have, there've been, there've been two deaths. And another one was a kid with a skull fracture. And it's people coming out there because there's no law enforcement and they know it. So you have an ordinance that says, come on out, you're going to invite more people out there. It will be open to anybody with an ATV, potentially. Or what people will hear is, Moretown has opened, opened its roads to ATVs. And they don't read the rest of the ordinance. They're not going to read the rest of it. They're just going to come.
And what was also stated previously was, is in teaming up, what the state police recommended was teaming up with VASA. Because with VASA comes their own enforcement by a game warden, which can do that.
If you go to VASA's website, they're actually encouraging people to come to the Montreux Motor States to use their trucks.
Yeah, yeah, they have beautiful trails up there right now.
In increasing the traffic on their tracks. They want that, they're encouraging that. It's on their, on their site. And then there are all sorts of subsidiary ATV clubs that are, are doing the same thing. Only they don't do it as, as, I don't know how to write that. VASA attempts to be responsible in their presentation of ATVs. And some of the other clubs are less so.
VASA works fine on private trails. They probably do a good job taking care of the VASA trails on private property. Because ultimately, if the landowner doesn't know what, doesn't like what's going on, if there's bad behavior, boom, close down overnight. The town's not going to be able to do that. You're not going to be able to control that. And I really don't think the town should secede their authority to a private organization that actually has a conflict of interest. I also don't think you should be doing anything to encourage increased traffic in the preserve especially. I mean, on any Moretown road, but especially in the preserve district. It's been preserved, like I said before, we even moved here. And part of the preserve is discourage development. Increased traffic is a big impact from development. It's a developmental impact without building a structure. So I don't know why, if you want, we have preserve zoned to protect the environment, to protect a peaceful environment for the people who live there. Why would you create a situation where you're going to invite ATV traffic, dirt bike traffic, and along with them ends up coming even more mutters?
Have you read Fountain Forest Street's ad for their land up there?
Yeah, I know, they're selling it.
Have you read their ad, though?
It doesn't matter.
It does matter because in their ad, they are blatantly encouraging log traffic. They are saying that road is open to any logging traffic.
It is, and it's been.
And that's, that's the point, so logging traffic is okay.
Logging traffic is a traditional use in Vermont. It's always been okay to be blocked, blocked to log. That road has always been open.
The lawyers are pretty respectful. When the lawyers, when they're driving, most of them, not all of them, but most of them have been very respectful in years. They don't drive when the kids are on the road. They, they don't stop, they stop by your place and wait.
They're talking about the lawyers.
Yeah.
They're regulated for, for erosion. They were actually blocking the road and accepting penalties to keep trucks from going in there and ruining the road for the bigger trucks, for their log trucks.
So if we're also talking about safety on the road, let's talk about pedestrian traffic. I walk my dog on Herringbrook Road every morning and typically every afternoon. I have almost been hit multiple times by multiple different people on that road. Multiple times. If we want to talk about safety on the roads, there was a person riding her horse on Ward Brook who was hit by a vehicle in the corners.
Right, so.
So, and we're not talking about any other traffic besides people driving on the road.
Right, so why increase, we should not be increasing.
I am more worried about getting hit by somebody driving to work in the morning, walking my dog on Herringbrook, than I am about getting hit by someone on their ATV.
And HDP is statistically the most dangerous vehicle on the road. That's just, statistically, they aren't designed for safety and speed on a hard pack surface. They're made for. Car, cars are, have safety regulations that they have to meet. ATVs don't meet them for the conditions that you find on a hard pack traffic area.
All right, well, what if, if someone were to come to you and say, you know, we have a way of basically slowing down the amount of ATV use and damages and so on and so forth. Is that something to be in favor of?
No, I don't believe it. Nobody's done anything for the past.
Well, that's because I had, that's because we've never had anything at all. I mean, with, with anything, there's pros and cons. And, and right now, it's a bad situation. Well, what, so what we want to do is, if, if in fact an ordinance does come to pass, what we want to do is to make sure that it's designed so that we reduce the amount of misuse.
And I think that, that's what Ray and Callie have been working on.
I would suggest that before you do anything, to say, allow more out there. There's plenty of state law already that ought to just be enforced. If you don't need an ordinance to have a certified law enforcement officer go out there and ticket people for not being registered. Should be registered and you're supposed to carry insurance. Send, get some law enforcement time out there and start ticketing people for no registration and lack of insurance. And if we call, if I call up and say, there's a couple dirt bikes out here racing back and forth on the road, can you come? Somebody's got to come out. Somebody, I think if you need to have a presence out there so people real, the bad actors realize, you can't do this out here. And we will watch. And I think before you ever even think about opening up the road and maybe doing something, we need to see the enforcement out there happening now. And it has to be part of, it would have to be part of the ordinance. You decided two years, we're not going to budget for that anymore. You guys are, you're on your own over there. And then you take the budget away and we're overwhelmed with all this traffic. And I still have to go back to, the town plan has, almost half this town is preserved to protect it. And you're talking about passing an ordinance that's going to create a pretty big development impact on that area. And you could, you're thinking of like, Ray, I take care of, like, thinking maybe it's not development because nobody's building anything. But the effect is, without even building anything, you could have a huge impact on the environment over there by bringing in crowds of ATVs on the weekends.
Well, that, that's why I disagree that there will be more crowds. Like, what I'm seeing now is a lot of friends of friends, like the central Vermont area, I think, coming up to this loop. I mean, the loop is seven miles. It's not that great a trail. I mean, you know, two ATVs want to go 50 miles, you know, maybe.
There's also Hockal, which is another.
There's all kinds of trails.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Hockal is another, there's the loop, which is its own trail. Then there's Hockal, which is another one.
Yeah.
But what we saw the last time, and then it's like, yeah, it was like some kind of interim, it didn't really get passed. We had people coming from Rutland, coming all the way from Rutland with several vehicles, and they destroyed the trail through our property.
But to respond to your question, I'd be interested in what kind of process with community involvement, the ordinance would go through. Because our impression from the, my impression from the minutes is that it would kind of be voted out here and kind of become.
Who, who?
Is, is to get more input.
Yeah, but we haven't, we hadn't gotten to that stage. We're not even close. Yeah, we're close to that. I, I was hoping that at least get this discussion going. And perhaps at town meeting, we could even have a non-binding referendum, whatever, a vote, just see how much interest there is. And if, if, if it's true, that the Moretown residents really don't want this in any way, then I'm fine with that. But, you know, I, I think, again, I'm only doing this because I, I see a real problem with people going by my house and somebody's going to get hurt right on Jones Brook Road.
Right, and the first thing to do to take care of that is to get a law enforcement.
But, you know, like you said, you can call down there. But what am I going to say? There's no, there's no plates to report. I don't know who these people are. I've tried, I have tried to follow some. And my truck at nighttime, and they're gone, I, I have no. We had drivers go by on motorcycles to the wheeling from my house all the way down to Ward Brook, too.
So it's like a lot of, a lot of more position is just allowing and putting it out to the public, come on down, is going to make that worse.
Yeah, that's not the.
You've got, you've got to solve the law enforcement first.
I would disagree that being someone who's ridden on VASA trails, most of the people who ride on those trails, again, as Ray said, they want to be over in Northfield with the miles and miles of trails, systems that are out there. That's, that's where they want to be. And the people who you are attracting are the people who are taking their kids out in their side by side. They're being respectful, they're following everything. The people who are with VASA are, I've ridden VASA trails in Northfield and in Sheffield.
The issue of VASA trails and the opening of public roads to VASA are two different issues. And I think Washington would love to have access to the loyal trails through Moretown, upward, on public roads.
We should not be turning public roads over to private organization. It's public property, it's not public property, it's a public right of way. And it's a right of way through our property. So you're turning over, it's almost like you're turning some of the supervision or whatever of that property, which is really ours, you've got a right of way, and you're turning it over to a private organization who has a conflict of interest with actually the property owner's interest and maybe even the town's interest.
VASA wouldn't really be able to do anything up off of Herringbrook anyway because that is owned by Fountain. And I can say with pretty confidence that Fountain would not allow that. So it would literally just be the road.
Wait, why were you saying to bring VASA in to do?
It was suggested by the state police to connect with VASA. Because they have that opportunity.
They don't have.
They have some of the connections, they can make different connections. There are other ways. Instead of going that way, there are other ways to go.
It still goes back to we should be turning public, our public rights of way over to private organization.
And VASA's far from a disinterested party giving advice. They want access to your roads.
It's the fox watching.
I thought the state police said that VASA was, that they.
VASA can't connect with anything in Moretown anyway because to get from Moretown to the VASA trails in Northfield, you have to go through the vine, the winery. And the winery said no. So VASA really doesn't want anything to do with us, but they could be a resource in helping with some of those.
I thought they said they could help with enforcement, that VASA.
And they have enforcement on their trails.
I don't know what they do for enforcement.
What's good about VASA on private property is that a private landlord can, this, this, they won't come to stop itself.
It stops the next day.
On a public road, it would take, once they have access, if something untoward happens or you want to change your mind, it would take years.
We won't get it back. It took a long time to just have it actually kind of tamp down a little bit. What you really need is enforcement. The problem that's out there now needs enforcement. Whether it's the state or the town, somebody has to come up with the money.
And that's, I think, I agree with your opinion.
I think we all agree with that.
So we could budget money to hire a sheriff to get up there or something?
But will they do it? You know, we can budget all the money we want. But if they say, they don't have time, they have the people.
Right, but I think it really is, we should tell one of our legislators here, but it's becoming more of, I don't think it should really be on the town. Because we have people coming out, we have people coming from other towns. So you've got a population in this town of, I'm not sure how many, paying their taxes. And now we have to provide law enforcement for people coming from Montpelier, Berry, Northfield, or wherever, and cover their bad behavior. And how much are they coming to Moretown? I don't know if you see these people, but how much are they coming to Moretown? Because there is no law enforcement here. They're not on the VASA trails because they don't want to behave. On the VASA trail, so they come where they don't have to behave because there is no law enforcement.
But Moretown's not the only town.
Then Moretown's not the only town. And I think, like, I think other states, they actually have more of a county government where, I'm not sure, maybe they, they run things more at a county level. Um, I actually think Vermont needs to think differently about how they provide law enforcement overall. And not move into individual small towns. It should be at a higher level.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I think we, you know, try.
Yeah, every, everything in your letters, you know, everything that you're saying, you know, we agree with it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, but we're, we're looking at different possibilities for, you know, how are we going to fix this problem?
That's all.
And we've, we've been discussing about law enforcement, not just, not just for ATVs and stuff, but for everybody.
For everybody.
You know, I mean, that's just, it's just, it's a terrible problem. What happened in the past is we did have somebody and we basically, we had a sheriff, ten hours a week under contract, and we ended up losing money on it. We're paying out more, you know, to hire them than any fees that they were collecting. And, you know, it's just, and it's even worse now. And it's, it's worse with the state police.
So what, what do you see as the problem?
The problem in terms of?
You're saying the problem is, is worse now?
I think they're understaffed.
They're understaffed.
I think that's worse.
Yeah, I'm talking about, yes, yeah, right, I was talking about the sheriff department. Yeah, they're, they're understaffed.
Same with the state police.
But is this, how much is the under, well, it seems to be understaffed before COVID, but it got worse because of COVID, as far as the amount of staffing.
Yes.
Yeah, but same.
It seems like.
But this is open right now.
Right, but, you know, it was understaffed even before that. You know, so I could, I think I haven't even called them during COVID. But until before that, I could call and, nope, we'll put it in the database, but we're not going up there. They only, this is terrible, but, um, and I'm sorry, Callie, but it's like they only come up for dead body. It's the only time I've ever seen the state police out there.
Not quite true.
I've seen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've seen plenty of them out there.
So maybe they're on John's.
I've seen them lots of times.
I haven't, I rarely see them. And I, that's what I feel like, they're not going to respond until I call them up because we've got another.
They got a, went inside my house, but it was a guy, they were doing the same thing, the motorcycle and the truck.
What was that?
That took about a week.
I called, and a month later, it turned out to be one of the same guys.
You're kidding.
And, uh, the state police came and, um, it's the only time I've seen them, I didn't show up, but.
So I, I think it's just, this is just a, the beginning of a discussion that, you know, there's, there's no, nothing in written, nothing's been decided.
I have another thing that's different along the same topic. A few years ago, I wish about ten years ago now, one of the culverts washed out. Um, and it was just past Bot Racing Place when those culverts washed out. And there was no traffic for like three months. And then they fixed the culvert. You know, if you, even if there was just one gate on the road.
The fact that it's a loop makes it very.
It's a race track.
One gate.
It's a race track.
Would make it so that everybody has access to their property and it's not a loop. It was amazing, it was, it was like three months, one summer. Do you remember that, Ray, when the culvert was out?
And I've thought, you know, thought about the gates sometime, I just, I don't think it would work because I think eventually people would put trails around them.
You'd have to find a way to make it work, but.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I, um, after seeing some of the things that go on, we've talked about even gating from December, during mud season particularly, uh, December to, you know, May first or whatever. Uh, and that, I don't think that's completely impossible that way. It's a lot to consider when, when you put up a gate, you know, you know, there is a town road. And, you know, people like to use them, and who, who do you stop, you know?
Well, but, but walk it up.
When?
Walk it up.
Where?
That, that, that's your job. One gate would be, would do the trick of closing the loop while still having access to the entire road.
Yeah, just pass.
Well, it's not, I believe that's.
That's why I don't think the ATVs should get passed.
Yeah, just, just pass.
Where that culvert washed out?
Fountain Forest.
Yeah, the culvert washed out.
And they had the rocks there. I mean, that, whenever, they put the big rocks there to, uh, because there was so much damage when they were actually logging in there. And, uh.
Does that work?
I, I believe that. It was worked in terms of, of people going up, well, I, I thought up around the loop. Isn't that true, right?
People pull the cinder blocks out.
People get, that's for sure.
They pull the cinder blocks out.
Yeah.
But it was, but it was an observation that, that one summer, and it was like ten years ago, that was like, also it was like quiet, so what's going on? And then I walked up there, I go, the culvert's out.
Yeah.
What a difference.
All right, well, there's obviously a lot more that we've got to discuss on this.
That's really rich and juicy.
But, and it's really good. I was glad to see those letters because we want, definitely want input from, from townspeople. And, uh, so we're just going to keep, keep talking about it. And, you know, we've got to, you're absolutely right, we've got to address with some type of law enforcement, everything, all of our roads, trails and so on. And, you know, we've just, just got to do this.
We appreciate it, it's a great job as, as a support, and we appreciate that.
Oh, this is easy as pie. Look how long I've been doing it, you know, so.
It's just a little, from one of my friends, it's a little beer. I think it just gets a little difficult as someone who tries to be responsible, tries to do things. I mean, I know, Deb, I've stopped for you before and we've had a conversation. So I think, you know, as someone who's trying to be as responsible and just going through, because, I mean, I have horses, I've done a lot, you know, I know what it's like. I know the common sense stuff to do. And I think for those of us who are trying to be responsible and do the right thing, that we may not do it a hundred percent of the time, you know? Those trying, it's frustrating to then get classified in with the people who.
I understand, we're, we're not classifying you by that. I mean, I'll talk to you later. Um, I don't, I don't, no, I'd like to talk to you later, I love Cam or whatever. But, um, we know who the, the sane people are and who the really respectful people are.
I can tell you, I could probably give you names of people.
But we also know that you, when you open up that camera and we lived through it the last time, and that's why I'm so kind of emotional about it, that we lived through it the last time. Um, and then lived through, you know, finding the kid in the road and dealing with that, and it didn't have to happen. If it wasn't, you know, um, the wild, wild west out there, that never, it wouldn't have happened. Um, and then seeing that it could happen again for the behavior that's going on out there. So I really feel strongly that if you open it up again, people will come from everywhere, they're going to come from other states.
If you, I went to Berlin, New Hampshire, is what people often talk about. They think, well, if you want to ride your ATV, you should go to Berlin, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
So I went to the Berlin, New Hampshire, what, their town website. And on the banner of Moretown's website, they have a picture of the church in the river during the autumn. Berlin, New Hampshire has an ATV in the, in the middle of the park. That's their, there's.
Is that right?
We don't want that in the preserve. That's the.
Well, we have Moretown residents who I've talked to who have said, like, we go to New Hampshire just because at that point, um, their kids were able to ride, which they are not in the state of Vermont, which I'm perfectly fine if you're under sixteen, whatever. But that, that's where they went because they had trails, they paid their registration to New Hampshire and they trail over there and make a weekend out of it.
Okay, well, anyway, we're all on the same team and we want to work together. And, uh, so any input, you know, that you want, give it any time, please feel free to do it. We really appreciate it.
I think as a, as a, as a, not necessarily now, but if, uh, as you develop, uh, uh, as the ordinance gets developed, having, having an idea of what that is going to look like to.
Yeah, certainly.
Well, are you just going to have, do you have a process for what you're doing? Or are you just?
We're just talking about it right now.
So when, when you develop that, it'd be nice to get that out.
It's such a hot button topic. I think you need to have some kind of working group that includes a lot of other people.
That's pretty much what we've been, well, as you know, everything we've been doing in town, we do have committees, and so it would be the same thing here.
You know, it, we haven't really, we've talked about it, Cal and I have talked about it, and we're just not feeling things out. We really haven't got to the committee stage yet, but, you know, maybe that is the next step, you know?
Is this the only, this is really the only area in town where there's ATV use as far as?
No, I, I, it is, you know, I, I just.
I'd say it's the biggest.
Is where?
The, the biggest, wouldn't you say?
I'm betting seventy-five percent of the ATV traffic in town.
Is what?
I'm just guessing. Probably seventy-five percent of the ATV traffic in town goes by my house.
A lot of the trash we get on our road is from, uh.
Berry.
It's from Berry?
Yes, as I said, Berry.
Yeah.
Except, except for my.
As a Hockaw gets some traffic because I've been a rich soul with that.
You can, and that kind of.
Like chasing.
Well, that's right, that's why you don't have to. You can chase to, chase connects.
Yeah.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, because if you go by my house and you go straight, you will end up in Riverton. It's not a great road, I wouldn't recommend it.
Tom, you ever been outside of Moretown or you just stay right in the, down, basically down? You've never been outside of Moretown?
What's that?
You've never been outside of Moretown?
No, you killed it.
Gone on a chase road there and coming to Riverton?
I, of course I've been there.
Yeah, that was giving you a hard time.
I know.
Okay.
I don't love Moretown that much, so I stay here all the time.
We got some other stuff we got to take.
Yeah, we did this Moretown. All right, no, we take mine out.
Again, thanks for coming in and writing the letters, really appreciate it.
Thanks for all you guys do.
Okay.
Thank God you were willing to do that. Someone better do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just going to listen, since we're already here.
No, it's fine, it's great. Say yes to you. Carla, do you have something for public comment?
No, she's here for the library.
Oh, the library? Oh, my goodness. Okay. Okay, so Joe's not coming in, um, the garage, why don't we, why don't we skip down to town hall if that's okay?
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. So, now, that's, that's your, your.
Well, I thought that there would be some more folks here from the committee, but, uh, Tyler and I are here to hold for it. Um, basically, we just wanted to give the board an update because we wanted to, uh, have some community engagement at Morfest. And so we originally thought we would do something actually at the town hall as well as Morfest, but we've decided that it should just be at Morfest because people aren't going to want to go over to the town hall. I mean, there's only a short window of time there. And so rather than, uh, what we thought is in the future, we would have some, uh, we could do some layout and show people what some, I'm going to get into that in a minute about what some of the things that need to happen and possibilities and invite all the various committees in town and invite townspeople to come and, and see some physical marks on the floor and this Algo's making some posters to show some design stuff. So, um, that's one of the updates. So we're trying to have that sort of some, some boards and some, uh, an area at the Morfest where people can come and hear what's going on and also give some input or some thoughts of what they would like to see or whatever. This is nothing that's certainly in stone. The other update to, to let you know about is that one, but, um, hiring Bill Gallup, uh, who did the ADA life safety assessment. If we just do that and we don't do anything per se with the library, you know, going forward, he, his, uh, and I don't know if anybody's had a chance to review what I sent you, that he, the documents he created, but basically, um, the building, the present lift does not meet ADA code. So Bill came up with an idea, a, a design idea that we're going to show at Morfest and, uh, try to, you know, would be incorporated into future use of the town hall. Again, this would be just to use the town hall. And the library is again, another, it's part of that, I mean, it's important. Um, so anyways, there's, there's a lift that would be from the basement, access from around back. I mean, I won't take the time, we could roll through the drawings right now, but again, I encourage you to look at that email. And then that lift, which we're going to show, this will be in the display, that lift goes to the first floor and then it goes to the stage. So then that, what that lift is doing is eliminating the need that we've spent a lot of time thinking about, oh, there needed to be a ramp to get up to the stage and how much room would that ramp take? And the seating for parties and meetings and the like and such. So, um, that was, so that was one of the things that are identified that we could do. These are the things to keep our town hall so that we're ready for two, twenty thirty-four, I believe it is, when it's two hundred years old. So we need to, we don't have that much time. Twenty thirty-four is going to be here soon for the two hundredth birthday. The other thing is that, um, we'll need to really do, the water is still coming into the basement. The, the thing by the side door with the grate and everything, I mean, Martin's cleaning that up three or four times a, a summer. Um, so part of the, the, the town hall project would be hiring an engineer and really doing a, a mitigation on how we can deal with the water in the basement. So there would be the lift, the mitigation, there's some fire code items for the ceiling in the basement. There's some exit hardware that needs to be done. And, and then again, just the basic building maintenance. So that's just part A phase would be, that's the given, the library goes somewhere else. Okay? Then what we're also going to show is, um, how the library could look in the town hall and how it could function moving forward in years to come, you know? So that's part of that display would be. Uh, and then just another side little thing is that we, we were also thinking that we would need a fire protection sprinkler system, but, and I don't, I won't break that letter out, but we don't need one as long as we work on a few, a few other fire code issues in the basement in terms of the ceiling and the separation. But based on the number of people that occupy the building, we wouldn't need a sprinkler system, which is pretty good, considering, though, although we might want to, if we invest money into, in wanting our building to make it to not only twenty thirty-five, but could make it to twenty-one thirty-five. I mean, without, you know, we, we saw what happened to the church in Middlesbrough, so we might want to consider sprinkling. Um, so I think that's, that's pretty much where we are right now. I think the next step of, of showing people in the community what we've come up with and how, uh, the phase one and then the library phase of keeping the library there, how that could all function. And I think what would be important to really is another piece of that is that with it becoming more, you know, a whole community center because of some of the other visions of not just the library utilizing the basement, fixing up the basement, which we're going to try to show and have people give their input, where we could have classes and people could come meet there and, is a, any use you could think of, you know? We could have, ATV meetings could be there in the basement when we get it fixed up, you know? Um, but in any event, uh, so that's, uh, we're going to show what some of those, we've had a lot of input early from community members of what they'd like to see there. So that'll be part of the, the Morfest display, so to speak. And then also to see what other people think or maybe some other people think, but let's not do anything. But any, not doing anything isn't the answer. We would, I would think we would at least need to do that phase one type of work, just to.
So, uh, I didn't read all your documents, John, but the, how is the elevator we have now noncompliant? Is it width?
It's the width, the fact that you need a key to get into it. You know, it's not a push button kind of operation, you have to go find someone out. Uh, but mainly it's the width. I could read you the sections of the.
Yeah, no, I.
It's just, it's a noncompliant.
Put it in.
Yeah.
We were in, I'm sure we were in compliance.
Yeah.
But that was, you know, way back.
Right. And even though. Right. And even the reports that we just got from VLCT, we have a problem with, with it the way it is right now, with the way the grate is coming into the,
Right, you're right.
Into the sidewalk and stuff, that they just noted in that, but.
So basically, the elevator would move back towards, to the back of the building?
Yeah, it would come, I mean, I'd love to show you the drawings, you know, but.
Yeah, kind of where the steps are.
Yeah, you know, and I've even talked with Johnny Summers, because you know, he has access to his apartments back there, but there would be two handicapped spaces created back there. You know, kind of where the fuel tank is, though I think we could relocate that fuel tank. Still show where it is, but there'd be two handicapped spaces there, a sidewalk, and you'd go in and there'd be a slight ramp, because the grate is lower there. And then the, you know where the old post office is right now?
Yeah.
That's basically where the elevator would be.
Okay.
And, you know, we've, we've got some great ideas about how we could utilize still the post office in another space in the building, in the basement or something. It's not gonna be discarded or anything. And there's, you know, talk of some upgrades to the kitchen and stuff like that, but, you know. So, uh, you know, you'll see it said Morfest. Hopefully not just Kyle or I, but some of the committee members, but, you know.
Yeah.
No, they will be, you know? We're meeting again on the ninth. You're always welcome to drop in, and, uh, we'll carry on, you know, and keep, keep you guys updated to what we're, you know? One of the, the last thing, and then so we can move on, is that we've, um, it, the, and this board has also talked about it, and talked about it the last time I was on the board, whatever, number of years ago, was, you know, Town meetings, we all love having Town meeting there. Presently, the way it is, because of the ADA access is a problem, but we've been trying to look into and see about the, the thing about voting, you know, there's an issue about voting on the stage, the regulation, you know, about the distance and people walking by to the bathroom and all that, and whether we go back to the school. So, uh, I don't believe that the, the lift will make it so that people have access to the stage, but I'm not sure how we can address that, you know, that voting issue, because it's more than just the, the ADA access. It's also the, the actual physical space.
Right.
You know, so I don't know. That's, that's another discussion.
Okay. Well, yeah, once again.
I mean, you know, I've had people say to me, let's just, you know, why don't we just build a new Town Hall? Then we can deal with all these issues. So sleep on that one. Okay? Okay, anyways.
Well, thank you, Don, thank you, Carla, for, for the work that you're doing.
Will you, we'll see you Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And just keep us informed as you.
Yeah, we'll keep going, we'll keep going.
That's terrific. Anything else on that? Anybody? Okay. So, um, going back up, I don't see that this, we pretty much had this discussion, it's like, it's like visit, so.
Yeah, we're good.
Uh, I'll get together with Sasha on that. And Joe's not here, and then, oh, the RFP.
There was only one.
Only one?
That's the.
It was just for the electric.
Yeah, the electrical.
Yeah, that was.
Okay.
I'm wondering if it's the timeline, but we aren't gonna, we're gonna lose the money if we don't do it this calendar year, right?
Right, we have to do it by December, but the, so the electrical is, should be done separate to the, though we should try to do the moisture vapor barrier thing if we can find somewhere, but the electrical, we should try to move forward, because there's definitely some efficiency Vermont money there.
Look, let's see the proposal.
It's right under your local.
Whoa.
Because actually, they, they need the lighting, and, you know, the, the lighting needs to be fixed anyway, so this is an opportunity to fix the lighting.
This is Town White and Breezeville.
Oh. It's in front of you.
You want me to read it?
Sure.
This is a bid for the, uh, it looks like the electrical improvements to the town garage based on the Efficiency Vermont proposal. And, uh, it looks like it's, uh, replacing the, all the lights and labor, and the price is eight thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. And he has included attachments detailing the products he plans to use, which we probably are in compliance with Efficiency Vermont, we'd probably, you know, have to check that out to be sure of that, but. Eight thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. That's the only price we do have. I don't know where we are, where we do stand on the funding. Do you have any idea?
I think Don.
I was gonna look it up, but I think, uh, I think there's like a four thousand dollar, uh.
Credit, maybe?
But yeah, credit from Efficiency Vermont. I'm just gonna look it up.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds.
I think that was the number.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'll give that to you in a second, but. But whether we, you, I mean, we could check with Brad, uh, from Efficiency Vermont, whether we could use it all for the electrical, or we use some of it for that, and then also use some for the fixing that whole, uh, moisture and vapor barrier problem in that right front corner.
Right. If we use, um, just speaking out loud here, and I don't know all the rules, but I don't know if, if it's over five thousand, do we need to have order approval or not, John? This is eighty-four ninety-five, but if we take off the discount from Efficiency Vermont, that put it under five thousand dollars.
Right, right.
Then we could proceed with the project without.
I, I, I'm pretty sure we could. How much, um?
Yeah, it is for, for your four thousand dollar municipal bonus project. Please begin conversation with me. This is from Brad Long, because that guy, Paul, he left for another job that I was working with.
All right. Sasha, how are you doing in terms of budget?
I can get back to you on that, as far as that. Where would you wanna, where do you want him to look for?
Well, just, what, how we're doing year to date, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And so that answers the question, as long as there's money budgeted, you know, and we're looking at forty-eight hundred or whatever.
Yeah, forty-five hundred dollars.
Or forty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, whether we could, um.
Take.
Yeah, just, yeah, just do it.
I wonder if Martin put something in the budget anyways, because the lighting, he's got lighting out right now. It's kind of dark in there. I mean, you know, I mean. So I wonder if maybe there's something in there that he planned, that he was gonna need to do some lighting. But I can reach out to Brad and ask him if we can use it for just one item. He might say, well, you know, use it, and then we can start to still, you know, for next year, find a contractor who's gonna do that, you know, they gotta open the, the eve and rebuild the eve and insulate and.
Maybe that would be the way to go, Don, just get this part done.
Yeah.
So we can use up the coupon we have from Efficiency Vermont.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I guess I would make a motion to go forward with this, if we can use that coupon, the four thousand dollar coupon.
Yeah. Sasha, did you send me that call so I could?
I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay?
Please, and then I can.
What, it says, or just?
Sure, well, you can, well, I mean, I'll have, I'll get it in an email form, and then I can send it to Brad and have him look at it from Efficiency Vermont and see if it, you know, if it works. That meets the criteria.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't, I just don't vote on it now.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
But we should stay on that other item, though, because.
Yeah, I think.
Because it is a, it is, it's only gonna get worse.
Right, yeah. But I'm thinking we'll probably get a lot more response in the winter from contractors. Everybody's flat out now.
Right, no, for sure. You were mentioning, uh.
EF wall.
EF wall, because they did, they built it, right?
Yeah. No, and I didn't get a chance to talk to them today.
Maybe if you reached out to them, you could say, is it something that you could do this winter or something? I don't know.
It may be a good winter project for them.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, uh, move down the list here. We've got reports and communications announcements. What do you have there, Sasha?
Um, Tom. Um, Rodney cannot do the CD fiber MOU because he has a conflict of interest, so he's referred us to another lawyer, and I assume that you guys want me to go ahead and contact him to get him going on.
Yes, yes.
And I heard from Robert Turner, who said that Martin and the guys met with him last week, and they're, they're moving forward with it.
Okay.
So it's good news. Did you get the email about the Joe wanting some specific?
Yeah, it's funny, because I, I had told Joe we're not moving the model, but we're just resetting it.
Because I think that was one of the suggestions that Mary had.
Yeah, to just reset it.
To just reset it, okay.
And I'll, I'll talk to Joe again.
Okay. And then Craig Ashgall, who need to have, um, he'd like to be reappointed to the DRB as alternate, and his, it expires this month, so.
Uh, let's do it right, right now. I make a motion that we, uh, appoint Craig Ashgall. I'm sorry, I.
DRB alternate.
The DRB alternate, that's right, he's an alternate. Okay, as a DRB alternate.
Second.
Second. And any more discussion? Or any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. And with the DRB, John Riley would like to have Greg McGurney appointed to the regular seat where Eric has left a vacancy.
Oh, okay, so, so appoint Greg?
Greg McGurney to the regular seat as the alternate.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So Greg McGurney will be, uh, a regular member of the DRB. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Becky O'Clair sent in her resignation, resigning from the Finance Committee. Just so everybody's aware.
Who, who, who's I missed that?
Becky O'Clair. She's got too much going on, and also resigned from the Finance Review Committee.
Okay, I, I make a motion that we accept Becky O'Clair's resignation from the Finance Review Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? That's, that's too bad, but, and, I think we still do have some, some interest. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Um, there was an inquiry about renting the Town Hall for a couple hours on a Sunday, once a month for the next, like, five, six months, and they're going to play their cello's there. The library would need some clarification as to whose responsibility for setup and breakdown and, and cleaning would be. We've been asking people that use it to, you know, wipe down and do some disinfecting, but we should have something in place for a meeting to set up or tear down.
Yeah.
Didn't the Cello read that email? Didn't they say they would do that kind of?
I thought, I thought that too.
They said they were gonna.
Okay.
I don't know. I thought that the Cello people said that they would do.
Do you all know that?
I don't know. I have to look it up again.
Yeah.
I thought, I'll try to find it, I have it. While we're doing something else.
We, we provide the cleaning stuff, right? And they just utilize it? Is that how it goes?
Yeah.
There is two permits over there, one for Bliss Bar, that needs to be approved by everybody.
Okay.
And then there's a permit for a grant just for you and Tom to sign.
Okay.
I just put a sticky note on it.
Okay.
And while we're on the Town Hall, I had a phone call today. They are planning a rain date for Eric Titchard's celebration of life, and wanted to know if the Town Hall could be utilized for that, just for a couple hours, October 2nd.
October 2nd, okay. Everybody's fine with that, I'm sure.
Yes, certainly.
And I looked back and did some digging on Trevor, Travis's request, that Legal Trail is indeed number fifteen, so I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that that was.
Okay.
I've been trying to get ahold of Chad Barrett to see if he could come in, but he's got a voicemail that's saying he's unreachable right now, so I'll keep trying on that. And then I have an email from Laura Gans on Route Two. She's got some concerns with speed. She's ready to see if there are any plans, or could be plans, to monitor the speed limit along the stretch of Route Two. Just, she's noticed a lot of, um, working from home the past year, particularly during construction season. She's had a front row of many occurrences during, many occurrences literally shaking when large trucks speed by. She has a sense that hopefully through the winter it will subside, but she's just got some concern about it and wondering if something would be done.
So which stretch is that?
Route Two.
How about where?
I would say over towards Gallagher Acres in that area.
Yeah. Which is where we've had issues before, and unfortunately, we couldn't get the speed, and it lowered. You know that there are very few places on that that you can go fifty? I just find it hard to believe that they, that that traffic study was accurate.
The pavement there is so bad.
Right, right.
If you go fifty, you're gonna get launched. I think they are planning on repaving that.
They did a section.
I think they're gonna do more.
By the junkyard, they did that section, and the Mortown landfill.
Well, that's not gonna skull traffic that one.
No, no, but they did do a section, and then they did the hill by the guy doing the flowers, by the state garage.
Yeah, right.
And then I got this email from Andy. Um, she's asking if the guys could do mowing to, not on Tuesdays or Thursdays. They have classes outside. I think today was just, because yesterday was a holiday, but I guess it interrupted some of their April classes.
Okay.
So I, I can certainly send an email to them.
Yeah, that'll be good, okay.
And then she wants to know about the.
About the what?
The port-a-potty.
Uh-huh.
Somebody from the rec had spoken to her, and I, I personally thought that the rec was doing it, but maybe it's, it was the school. I don't know who, I haven't gotten a bill. Do you guys know what the scoop is with the port-a-potty?
No. I don't remember talking about it. Talked about it. Talked about it from Mothess, but not, not for something that's...
I don't remember. Yeah, I know about from Mothess, but not...
Yeah. I just figured it was the rec committee that...
That's what I thought too. All right, I'll get ahold of Steve. And then she had a question on... What should we do if there are trees that are potential hazards in the forest, in our outdoor living, learning spaces? Who should we let know and who can we request do the potential cutting?
Well, she would let me know. And, uh, potential cutting, I assume would be... Our road, road crew.
Or would the rec committee take it on, or no?
No. No.
All right.
Yeah, and that's something we, we wouldn't want to happen anyway.
We'll learn your name and all you then.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Good, thank you. Callie, you have anything?
I had just talked with the admin lady at the State Police today. I also emailed FASA just to check in with them. And see if they would be willing to maybe come to a meeting and talk about different things, because that was the State Police's recommendation. If I do not hear back from them, I will stop in at Tractor Supply because the president works there.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So I can stop in and see him, and then I'll, if I win and if I get a response from them, I'll let you know the schedule. But I wanted to see if that was even something they were open to. Is there anything else? I don't think so, I think that was it.
Okay.
And then the house been pretty quiet?
Okay. Right?
All quiet here.
All quiet there. Tom?
Well, I guess I'm never really quiet, but I was wondering, uh, where are we with the owl? I think it's called an owl, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
The invoice is in that file, it could be...
Okay.
Only because I, there was a couple of people who have approached me and they were, they were, um... Because we don't, there's no clear policy yet on what we're doing about masks and, you know, the state. I, I don't want, I'm not going there. But any event, who would want to attend the meeting or asking if we still had the remote possibility, like some other times? And I said, well, we're working on it, so I guess, you know, we're getting there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then something from a while ago was, um, I had asked, only because I was curious after reading an article about cyber, cybersecurity. And you were gonna check in with our IT folks or whatever.
Do you have something called Carbonite right now? And he's...
What's it called?
Carbonite. And he is actually working with the LCT in Sherman to make things stronger and better.
Yeah, same, great. I mean, just hearing some of the things you hear about, that people have been hacked or whatever, you know, ransom, whatever it is, ransomware, whatever's going on. It's pretty, pretty crazy. No, that's, that's it, that's town barrage sample we did, so that's, that's it for...
Okay.
And I guess, oh, with the traffic, I mean Joyce is kind of just, will circle back with us during the traffic coming.
Yeah, I'm hoping that will be the case, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and for me, the only thing that I was curious about is, I had saw on the news that Ryan, is it Ryan Buska? Okay, was killed in an accident. And that's happened before, people don't stop at junction of Route 100P and 2.
Yeah, that happened just a year or two ago, went into that guy's house.
Yeah.
I don't understand how that can happen.
I don't either.
I mean, it's pretty clear.
You, you, I, it says the slowdown of 35, and this is, you know, and then there's the stop sign, but...
You come across that bridge and it's...
People are coming down there doing 60, 70 miles an hour.
And it's not like he was out of state or...
Yeah, right, yes, exactly.
However, they, they haven't released any kind of odd, you know, report, whether he was...
See anything now. Is, is he Willie's younger brother?
It's Wade Buska's son.
Wade Buska's son, okay, so that's not the same Buska that was, did the motorcycle, the racing down on the...
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. Well, Willie was the one who did that.
Willie Bozak.
Oh, Bozak!
No, it wasn't, you take a guess.
Oh, oh, that's right, it's Bozak, not Buska, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, Willie's right down the road right now. With a huge dog.
What's that?
He has a huge dog.
Oh, all right, yeah.
Really, but...
Okay.
The dog jumps and puts his paws here, his head's up here.
That's what I...
All right, so...
Night, folks.
Oh, good night.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a look at the minutes of August 17th. Okay, looks like the, some of the things here Tom's gonna check on, so. I don't know if you heard anything about, um, uh, the, um... David Speck was gonna take a look at, or Tom was gonna contact David to take a look over at the, um, the junkyard.
He got back to me, he has, he'd been out, you know, for a couple weeks.
Okay.
He did, I sent him a reminder, and he said that the fencing has nothing to do with zoning, but the other, he's checking into it, yes.
Okay.
I just got that email this morning.
Okay.
Yep.
I think everything else has been drawn up. Now, I don't imagine Tom got back to you about... The county funds? For the...
No.
From the feds, okay.
No, not yet.
Is that the CB fiber?
Um, yes, right, right. And does anybody have anything more to add on the CB fiber?
Well, I'm a little concerned with it, because as I read through their budgeting, I don't, I mean, they're... It seems like they want a lot more money than what they have access to. And I'd rather see a plan where we know where all this money's gonna come from for this, rather than get halfway into this and, and then what do we do?
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
I mean, I'd like to see fiber to everybody, but, you know, you look at the map and, and a couple of things I noticed is, if you look at their town, their fiber map, I mean, this is the Harry Brook Loop. And, you know, they're showing camps up there that don't have fiber service, they never will have fiber service, but they're counting them as potential fiber customers.
Yeah.
You know what? And that's just the ones I know, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, maybe that you think that they just didn't, they didn't re, they just saw that there was a property there.
Right.
But then once they get into the more fine-tuned details of researching properties that are gonna get, there's no power to those, obviously.
Right. Their, their price is based on so many residents, right?
And you think they're counting...
If you reduce that residence by 20, then that unit price goes up reciprocally.
Right.
And I, I don't know, there's just, to me, there's some, seems to be a lot of unanswered questions, you know. And they want, you know, 2 million, if you take 2 million dollars divided by the 198 homes, it's like $10,000 a house. It seems like a lot of money.
Yeah.
It seems like there might be a better way to do this, but, uh, you know, through the existing network systems, like...
Right.
Waitsfield Telecom or some...
Well, they said they are gonna work with them once they do their poll survey. I think that's what the poll survey will do, will identify and answer that question of what they really, what places really are gonna be in the system.
And that's, to me, pretty important, that they get a little bit more plan to this, rather than just...
Yeah, I was, I was really surprised at how high the numbers were, too.
Anyway.
All right.
I'm sure we'll have another meeting about that.
Yeah, no, we can ask them about it some more.
And then a couple of things for the minutes. On page three, uh, it says, on the third to the last paragraph, John, let the SB know that the Waterbury Rec... Okay, so it's the, actually, it's the Waterbury Recreation Department, uh, summer day camp. Yeah. And they met, they were meeting at, I believe it's Saint, at the hall at St. Leo's.
Instead of the Waterbury, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's sponsored by the Waterbury Recreation Department. And then, um, let's see, uh, the poplar tree at the beginning of the driveway here?
Yeah.
I don't see a poplar tree there.
I thought you said...
You mean the black cherry, the, the one that's partially dead?
You said something about a tree that was down here, I thought you said poplar. Little black cherry instead?
Well, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not down, I mean, I, I guess I'm...
Oh, okay.
I'm confused.
Okay. I thought you had said that it needed, something down there needed attention.
Oh, no, no.
No, okay. So let's scratch that.
I think at some point, we're probably gonna wanna take the, the mountain ash down.
Okay.
Before it falls on somebody, because it isn't, it's not very healthy. You're shaking your head in agreement, Callie? Matter of fact, I think that could be done. So I guess, as, as my role as tree ward, I will contact a martyr on that. Okay, so I would make motion to approve those minutes with the corrections that I just noted. And I guess the, instead of poplar tree, it would be a mountain ash. Well, I know that the black cherry, the big cherry tree around the corner from Eugene's, is, looks like it's on its way out, so I wasn't sure if that's what anybody was trying to...
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Uh, any other old business we need to address? Anything from the list below or anything else?
I put together an RFP for Fletcher Road, the bridge, the Fletcher Road Bridge.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna go over it. Basically, um, I'm gonna just send out the retrans inspection report out. We'll send it out to three bridge contractors and try to surprise them back by the 4th of October. Did you have, did you get a email I sent about the... Or, no, I sent it to Cheryl. You could have this. I said, well, I will, I said, I should, I just thought of something, I was checking, I'm sure the emails are...
Okay.
But I'll, what I'll do is I'll email Cheryl tomorrow morning, so she's already had me that, the dress repair, construction, and probably going to tell me when to set.
Yep.
And that'll do us three contractors, and hopefully we'll get through it.
Okay, um, and then we have the, um, the RFP for the ground list. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that? Okay. You okay with everybody?
Yep.
I'm moving that we accept the RFP for the townwide reappraisal.
I'll second that. Any more discussion on it?
Well, I, yeah, I just, besides the current firm that does, is doing, uh, not our, not reappraisal, but some of our appraisal work, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And what, is there, is there another, I mean, we probably, we're hoping that his bid will come in and be the one, because we've been doing the town for quite a while. But do we have anybody else to send it to, or is there a...
You could give me one name.
The Vickery?
Vickery, yeah.
They did it, Tom, yeah.
Yeah, I'll send them one.
Okay.
And then there's something, MM, I, I know a name of another one, actually, that I could, that someone told me about, I could send to you, just if you wanted another.
Yeah.
Another name, or maybe it's, yeah, it's not Vickery, it's someone else. I can send it to Sasha and she'll send it to you guys.
Yeah, Vickery did the last one, so that's why I thought that. But again, I'm not sure if he's doing it or any more of them.
What's the name of the company that's working, we're working with now again?
Nemrick.
Nemrick, yeah.
Nemrick, sorry.
Okay, then all in favor of the, um, RFP, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Any other old business? How about new business? Okay, good. Let's sign away here.
So we can make a motion to adjourn?
No, I got it.
No?
Oh, we have to sign, so usually we sign after...
Do I need to sign this?
Please.
Why, why me?
Okay, so I've got invoice for approval, a Nemrick invoice.
Okay.
There's like three of them right there.
Wonderful.
And here is the purchase order for the owl, total of $999. And we voted that that is okay, so I guess I can sign that.
Yeah, will we eventually be able to put that with the recovery funds or...
I think so, I hope so.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's, there's some other towns that they're able to, so, I hope so. hope so.
Clocks plumbing and heating, an invoice for $640. The, uh, the toilet, the toilet seat and so on, the lavatory faucet. And then, finally, is the invoice for $1232.48 from William Gallup Architecture and Planning LLC for his consulting services. So everybody's okay with that?
You okay with that?
Yeah, we, we got a preservation trust, we got $500 from them, so... Oh, there was a 10 right there.
Very good.
You, you already signed that.
Have I signed everything?
I don't, liquor license.
I haven't signed that.
Oh, Tom, she skipped right by you with the book?
I was signing the other stuff. I wasn't worried that I signed it bad.
Well, I don't need to sign that file.
No, you don't need to sign that file.
The file John has, I don't have to sign either, right?
Uh, just the liquor license. Right? Yes, thank you.
We didn't sign this one here, John.
Did I miss one?
Okay, uh...
Okay. I wasn't looking in the right place.
So for my AOT, state highway access and work permit?
You tried that one?
Let's see, I did sign in...
John did, he tried that one. That's it?
I feel like not, that I'm not signing paperwork every day, my signature doesn't work.
Those treats up there?
Treats?
I don't know, those guys up in the east up there.
Oh, no, it's a clock.
Oh, it's a clock. Hey, I don't think it's gonna be brownies. Looks like Brownies gonna get something up there. We're gonna have some of those good brownies. Good nice ride home. Darn.
Sorry.
Do you wanna keep a copy of the Chris McHorn's thing?
Yes.
So here's the... Liquor license for Bliss Bar LLC.
Did you sign it?
What's that?
Did you sign it?
Yeah.
Well, so we all need one?
Yeah, we need to sign that.
I hope I get to have a drink up there someday.
Where is that for? Just the store?
No, this is for, uh, Bliss Farms, isn't it?
Yes.
For their functions up, uh, Jordan, Dan, and Trapp.
There's gonna be a beer tenant, more person there?
Yeah, it sure is.
That's the...
Yeah, 4 to 7.
4 to 7?
Well, 4 is, like, the fireworks are like at 7:30, I think it's something like that.
Right, sky's at 4 o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay.
Short and sweet, I guess.
Till 9, that's good, really, it's good.
No, it's good, yeah. I went to one of the meetings the other day, it's coming together, yeah.
Okay, very good, anything else, Mary?
I think I should, you talk, Jared.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.